Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for June 14th, 2022, to order. Let's please rise right now. We'll take a moment for silent prayer or meditation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Williams. Mr. Williams?
Ready? Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Paulina, roll call, please.
Good evening, fellow commissioners. Commissioner Hing? Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Becerra?
Here.
Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Here.
Chair Lewis?
Present.
All right. Tonight, we have meetings from the regular Planning Commission that was done on May 10th, 2022. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? Anyone? Anyone going once, going twice? All right. If no changes, the minutes are approved as submitted. Do we have any oral communications for tonight? Anyone? All right. Moving forward, there's one item on the consent calendar. Does anyone have any questions with regard to that matter? Seeing no discussion, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
What's your motion?
What?
What's your motion?
For which one? The consent calendar, right?
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, yes.
I will go ahead and second it. Paulina, roll call.
Okay. Motion by Gutierrez, seconded by Commissioner Lewis. Commissioner Hing? Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Aye.
And Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Motion passes. Five oh.
Okay. So there are no public hearings on the agenda, so we will move to non-hearing items. Under non-hearing items, we have a study session on the Brown Act. However, because this study session involves an approximately one-hour-long presentation, it's going to be moved to the end of the commission meeting tonight, so we can wrap up our routine matters. Does anyone have any objection to that? Moving on to commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items. Does anyone on the commission have anything to report or comment on? Seeing none, we'll go to the Community Development Director's report. Paulina, do you have any items to report to the commission?
Just a couple items. Chair Lewis, we are going to be hosting a Fourth of July parade, or Heroes Parade and Street Fair, July 4th, on Glendora Avenue. The parade will be starting at 10:00. All information to either participate in the parade or for information on the street fair is available on the city's website. We're also going to be kicking off the summer concerts on Wednesday nights at the Civic Center. The information on the bands and the time is on our website as well. And that's it for this evening on items.
Any questions, anyone? All right. Moving on to City Council actions. Paulina, are there any City Council actions you'd like to report to the commission?
Yes, there's a few. At the last City Council meeting on May 17th, the City Council approved the ordinance for the Grove at Merced specific plan. And at the upcoming City Council meeting next Tuesday, June 21st, we'll be taking the updated ordinance for the ADUs for approval, as well as the R in Public Places annual report that was approved by this body.
Anyone have any questions? All right. If not, since there's no further routine business, I think the question is, do we want to keep this, do we want to keep this open for the study session, so that this remains televised? Or do we want to stop televising and then go through the hour presentation offline? Any perspective from the commission?
It's customary.
It's certainly the commission's discretion. I think I had originally advised to take it not televised, if only because in this one particular presentation slash training, you're talking to your attorney. And I just always prefer to have a more like intimate discussion. That said, I'm aware of the irony of a presentation on the Brown Act and it not being televised. So whatever the commission is comfortable with, there's nothing that requires it be televised, whatever you're comfortable with.
So we have a choice between having it televised or not?
Correct.
Correct.
So it's up to you guys. I'm open to either way.
Well, I think we should be televising it. I mean, it is a Brown Act.
Any objection to keeping it televised, guys? All right. All right. Well, we're going to move forward with the presentation on the Brown Act, item number two. I don't know, Paulina, who's going to do the presentation?
Chair Lewis, our city attorney, Baron Benhausen, will be providing the presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. I have been here already and given this presentation to the department heads, as well as one of the other commissions. And I was asked to as well, just come talk to you. So just to kind of give a explanation, or maybe a refresher of the Brown Act, really, as you may be aware, the Brown Act kind of governs, bottom line, it's about transparency, okay? And the relevant statutes are in Government Code 54950 through 54963. You look at them, they're pretty extensive, complicated, legalese. We attorneys like to make things really complicated. I'm going to try and put it in very easy-to-understand language. The basic requirement of the Brown Act requires public agency actions be taken openly and deliberations be conducted openly. So basically, you don't want to be hiding things, right? And you don't want to give the appearance of hiding things. We want to make sure that when the government's taking actions, the public is aware of what's happening, they're able to participate. Second element there, fundamental aspect, all meetings of a legislative body must be open and public. And attorneys being who we are, what is a meeting? What is a legislative body? These are the kind of things that we want to make sure are clear and are understood. So to talk about legislative body, obviously, we know City Council. And I would say Planning Commission, these are think very obvious, most people would think, yes, of course. If you look at the statute, any commission, committee, or board created by formal action of the governing body. I've seen circumstances where cities have created corporations, or they've created subsidiary bodies. I'm sure you're familiar, friends of the West Covina Library, or I don't know if you have that organization, but organizations like that, if they're created by formal action of a city, they're a Brown Act body. So in some cases, you can have some pretty obscure commissions or committees, which are going to be subject to these requirements. And feel free, by the way, if any questions come up during this, by all means, feel free to interrupt or stop me and ask, because that's the point of why we're here. I mentioned a private corporation. I have actually seen a circumstance where a city created a corporation, and there was some confusion over whether it was a Brown Act body. But again, formal action, if there's a resolution or a vote, you guys, City Council, it's a Brown Act body. So what is a meeting? And again, you know, the legal language, congregation of a majority of the members of a legislative body in the same time and place to hear, discuss, or deliberate upon any item within their jurisdiction. That's a lot to unpack in there, a lot to unpack in there. So just to kind of put this in lay terms, if there's a majority of you in the same place and time, and you're talking about something that's basically could possibly be under Planning Commission purview, that's a meeting, right? And that's something that has to comply with the Brown Act. Now, if you guys are talking about, you know, a mutual friend, that's not public business. As your attorney, I advise you to always exercise caution. If there's more, three or more of you in one place, be very careful. And, you know, this isn't in the presentation, but I do want to touch upon perception, as well as the legal reality. So legal reality is, if you're sitting here, and we're in a meeting, and you're talking amongst yourself here, public maybe can't hear you, but they see you talking. It could be completely innocuous, but there could be a public perception of a Brown Act. And I have seen many circumstances where the public is going to make those accusations, making assumptions. Now, it's not true, and you may be doing the okay, the legal thing, but I just want you to be aware of the risk of facing those kind of accusations in any given situation. Things in particular to watch out for, you know, informal discussions, I think I just talked to you about, telephone conversations for purpose of discussing decisions in advance, serial meetings, and I'll unpack that a little bit more in a minute, and emails, texts, blogs, social networking sites. So these last two items, serial meetings, texting, blogging, they're kind of a similar issue. What we call a serial meeting goes back to the top definition of a meeting. When I said it's when you, a majority of you are all in the same place at the same time talking, but that's not, that is a meeting, but that's not the only thing that could be a meeting. And I think blogs and texting are two of the biggest issues that bodies like yours face. So to give you an example, when I first started this work, I was asked to analyze, a council member went onto a local community blog and made a post about something that was of interest to the community. And sure enough, there's an accusation that they just violated the Brown Act. So, you know, I, as the attorney, then had to go through, okay. And I had to go and scan through every single blog post. Did any other council member come and make a post about that? You know, and if they had, that would have been a Brown Act violation. So it is, I think, unavoidable and in a particular potential pitfall for your positions, because you are one of the most outward-facing positions in the city. You have a lot of responsibility, and of course, you want to engage with the public, absolutely. But just know that there's a potential risk there, that if you're going on to public blogs and posting a lot about items or actions which could come under the Planning Commission, if another Planning Commission that has been there before you, that there's a potential risk of this. So just always be aware of that when you're on social media or you're publicly posting. I certainly don't want to say, don't do that, because you have First Amendment rights. And again, in accordance with your position, I think public engagement is vital. Just be aware, is all I'm asking. Okay. So what is a meeting? A meeting is not individual contacts or conversations. I use the social, informal social example, right? You're asking, maybe you have a mutual friend or something. One or two of you talking together, that's fine, if it's not related to city business. Attendance by a majority at certain conferences or social events, as long as a majority does not discuss issues within their jurisdiction. I think a very prominent example, or something that I see frequently, if a prominent member of the community passes away, there's a funeral you want to go recognize, there'll be a majority of officials there. As long as you're not discussing business, it's okay if there's a majority there. I would advise you, again, as the attorney, just be cautious about the public seeing, you know, if you're talking quietly and nobody knows what you're talking about, just be aware of a public perception, even if you're being completely above the line. Second item there is attendance at a meeting of other legislative bodies. Now, there's been many, many times in my career I've seen where Planning Commissions have been very interested in an item that you've passed on to the council, and several of you want to go to the council and see what happens, or give your input. And that's okay. Emails, this is another kind of a big danger zone. And I've seen a pitfall on this one as well. It is so easy to hit Reply All on an email. You have a staff member who will send out something, as they frequently do, they want to keep you updated, right? And you have a thought about that, or maybe a quick question, and without thinking, you hit Reply All, and that now gets distributed out to the other Planning Commissioners. So this is just a caution, to always be aware of that. What I always advise is for staff to blind copy, so that that is not really an option for you guys, but it occasionally does happen where you'll all be copied and see that. So the email from staff to you is not a problem, it's that accidental hit Reply All. And if that ever does happen to you, what I advise is just immediately disengage from that conversation, right? Also want to add, point out to you that potential Public Records Act problem, so using your own email or your own device, your phone, means that that device, or that personal email, your personal laptop, is now subject to Public Records Act. What that means is if someone's going to ask for a record from the city about a topic that maybe came before the commission, and you've been using your personal cellphone, then the clerk is going to contact you and ask you to do a search of your device, and you're going to have to produce those records. So my recommendation is always to use a city email address, and I do understand that's being established for you guys. I've talked to the city clerk about that. So texting, similar issue with email, as I mentioned. Another issue I want to point out with texting, and I've noticed, just to always be cautious doing it from the dais, I've just seen comments from the public or accusations like, oh, they're getting direction from such and such prominent business person. True or not, it's just a very common thing. Again, not a legal problem, but just a public perception one. So a recommendation is to avoid sending or receiving texts or emails during a meeting. In particular, if you've declared a conflict of interest, you don't want to be perceived like you're texting the other commissioners. Blogging, I think I already covered, short for weblog, basically a very public, outward-facing thing, very common with public officials, just be aware of the issues there. Hasn't been formally addressed by the FPPC, that's the governing body for a lot of these issues, but it is a very common topic, or a very common accusation to come up in regard to public posting. So what else are the requirements of the Brown Act? So as you may be aware, you're basically not allowed to discuss or take action on an item unless it's been properly agendized. Okay? So what does that mean? The city clerk handles most of this, but for your regular meetings, the agenda has to be agendized 72 hours before the meeting, no less. For special meetings, it's only 24 hours. Now, that used to always confuse me, because you would think with a special, you'd want to give more notice, not less, but it does kind of make sense, because people expect your regular meetings, they know when they are, so they know they're there. All documents that you guys get also have to be provided to the public. It can't be anything secret. Again, it comes back to the very first item I said, it all has to be done openly, transparently. It's the whole point of the Brown Act. This doesn't cover you guys so much, but city councils cannot give raises to certain executives at special meetings, it can only be done at regular meetings, and it has to be done in open session, not really an issue of the Planning Commission, but there are, let's say, previous bad actors in other cities that have caused these very specific rules to come forward. The agenda must also specify the time, the location, and include a brief general description of each item. This last one as well is something that I've, you know, comes up every once in a while. Oh, well, that wasn't, you guys took an action on something, and your description wasn't sufficient, or it was confusing. The general rule here is supposed to be no, it doesn't have to be longer than 20 words, as long as the average person can understand what you guys are going to be talking about in general, that's sufficient, right? We want to make sure the public has enough notice or understanding, if they have an interest, they can come and talk about it, participate. We're not here to try and confuse, we're not trying to obfuscate, make things unclear, or hide anything. Okay. So as I said, you cannot take an action or vote on something if it's not on the agenda. There are some limited exceptions to that. Now, most of these won't apply to the Planning Commission, it's more of a council thing, but just so you're aware of them, statutorily-defined emergencies, that's typically like labor shortages, crises, if there's a water pipe break, it has to be action immediately, those kind of things can be taken up on the agenda. The second item is if there's a need for an immediate action, it will require a two-thirds vote, if there's five of you, that means at least four have to do it, and you have to vote that there's an immediate need for action, and that the need arose after the agenda was posted. So it can't just be a simple mistake, it has to be something that's urgent, has to be handled right away, and it's really an emergency, in other words, for an emergency. Other items, this comes up a lot at the end of the meeting, there's usually a section for council member comments or questions, brief questions, comments, that's okay. If it ends up being an extensive discussion, or something that requires more extensive, then it needs to be agendized for an extensive discussion. But if it's a simple question, hey, what's going on with the Fourth of July parade? That's a quick answer. Brief responses to questions, comments from public, you know, there's a public comment period, you guys can choose to respond if you want to. Brief reports by board members and staff, and requests to agendize an item for future meeting. Close session, and again, this is not really utilized by Planning Commissions very often, more so by councils. You don't often have to discuss or get involved in the labor negotiations with the unions. Commission isn't really going to be involved in litigation to the extent the council is. But these are the specifics, personnel discussions, labor negotiations, talking about litigation with your attorney, right? Real property negotiations, it wouldn't make sense to try and buy something if you're publicly telling everybody what you're willing to buy it for. Trade secrets, and there's others. If there's security issues, those kind of things can go into closed session. There's recently been a big slate of hacking issues with cities, so those kind of issues go into closed session, I've seen. And I think this is important to note, disclosure by a public official of information that is discussed in closed session is technically illegal, a misdemeanor. What are the consequences of Brown Act violations? Potential nullification of the decision, potential criminal sanctions, as I said, a misdemeanor, which is up to six months in jail, $1,000 fine, intense adverse media attention, nobody wants that. So, and we're getting to the close of this, so recent updates here, so I gave you kind of the basic bare bones of what the Brown Act is. Honestly, it's something they could probably take an all-day class if you want to get in the weeds, but nobody but attorneys would really be that interested in that. A bill passed just this previous year, AB 361, and it became an issue during the pandemic that there's a requirement, you guys have to have a quorum, and you have to be physically present to have a meeting. Problem is, when the pandemic came around, there was a government order, we can't meet in person, so how do we conduct business? So fortunately, they passed a bill which provided an alternate and an exception to some of these Brown Act requirements. So under the Brown Act, you have to have a quorum, physically present. Members can remotely attend under the Brown Act, but you have to post the address of where they are remotely. So if you're on vacation in a hotel room, you have to put the address of your hotel room in the agenda, and you have to put your agenda on the door, and you have to let members of the public come and join you in your room, if that's where you are. That's under the Brown Act. And I have actually had council members do that, and I have had members of the public join a council member in their living room, just to prove they could, just to prove that they were complying with the Brown Act. I've seen it done. So AB 361 suspended those two requirements, though. So if there is an emergency, state of emergency specifically, which requires a vote of a council or of state officials, if there is a social distancing order in place, those two requirements, physical quorum being present and posting the agenda, are waived. But again, that's only when there's a state emergency. So that completes my presentation. Do you guys have any specific questions, or instances, or that you want to discuss?
Anyone with any questions?
Okay. With that, thank you for the opportunity.
I just had one question.
Absolutely.
Pertained to something that you had earlier in the presentation, specifically with regard to posts on various social media entities. Is there any, so for example, I think many cities have specific groups where people post about whatever topic is in vogue in the city at that point in time. Question is, is the first council member or elected official or member of a body to post the only person who can post on that? Let's just say, you know, that's, to me, I think that's a, it's an interesting legal question, because ultimately, if that is, and there are some in this country who would argue that that is the new public forum, and you are limiting the public forum to only one specific official who happens to get to the public forum first, and everyone else is just, you know, SOL, for lack of a better way of putting it, has that been addressed in any FPPC opinions, or is there any case law on that?
There's not any specific case law on that question. It's something that cities are kind of wrestling with, and a lot are putting policies into place specific for social media to figure out what rules should apply. But again, it's something that public officials need to be aware of, and it comes back to that transparency issue. And it goes to the heart of city officials' need, I think, to engage with the public, absolutely. So no, there's no specific ruling on that, and that's just why I always caution to just be aware before you go posting publicly on the internet. You know, it's hard to say, are you going to have to scroll through hundreds of comments on something to see if another public official has posted?
If, you know, we're not just the Planning Commission, we're also residents. So at that point, are we able to maybe ask questions, or things, you know? I personally don't, because I've seen so many city officials get killed on there, it can be a little cruel. But, so are we able to interact just as residents without any discussion of what's here, if we're asking what's happening, or to that?
Are you asking if you, as a Planning Commissioner, can also interact as a resident? Or residents in general can they interact?
As a resident.
So you always have to be aware of your role as a Planning Commissioner. So anything that could possibly come to you as a Planning Commissioner, you have to be aware of, that's a topic that you shouldn't be discussing with other Planning Commissioners. You, though, as a resident, can be talking to council members, even as a Planning Commissioner, you can be talking to individual council members. What you cannot do is talk to three or more, and you can't talk to, three of you cannot be discussing, and you can't, you know, talk to Commissioner Hing, and then go to Chair Lewis and say, well, you know, Commissioner Hing said this, because that now is a meeting, and you've become the messenger or the intermediary there.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is that also the case, that they'll give an example, someone on a commissioner board contacts different members on the board? contacts different members on the boards to see how they feel about something you've taken a straw poll?
Yeah, that would not be permissible under the Brown Act, unless it's during a meeting, during the agendized discussion.
Anything else, anyone?
I actually have a question regarding what you just said earlier. If one person is talking, and then I turn around, or whoever's turned around and said something to the other person, how do, how does the first person know that what the second has said to the third person?
Yeah, that's, that's a very good point, Commissioner Hang. You know, the rule is a majority becomes a meeting, three of you. But my advice is, don't even talk to one, because it's for exactly that reason, is you can't control, if you talk to one commissioner, technically, that's not a Brown Act violation. However, you cannot guarantee that that second person won't accidentally forget or intentionally talk to a third commissioner, and now all of you are would be in violation.
So someone can say hi.
No, no, that's not true. See, that's informal, you can say hi. But just, you know, don't discuss commission business, right? And again, if you ever have any questions on this or concerns, reach out to me or to your city attorney, Tom. That's what we're there for. So, any other question?
So this is among the planning commission that we're giving an example. For example, as a planning commission, can we technically talk to other commissions? For example, like the park commissions? Can we?
Yes.
So we can?
My caveat, and the reason I'm hesitating is, you know, does the park commission items ever come before you as a planning commission? So if they make a decision on something, and if it theoretically could be appealed or it ever gets sent to you, then I would just exercise caution. Talking to individual, let's say, park commission members is not a Brown Act issue. But you've got other legal issues. You cannot demonstrate bias, you cannot pre-decide issues, these are all separate potential conflict of interest issues that we didn't cover today, but you should be aware of. Just talking to a parks commissioner is not bias or pre-decision. And certainly, you're entitled to do your own investigation. It's common for commissioners to go to a site that's a CUP coming before you. You can go to a site yourself and just see what it looks like and how it feels there, that's, that's okay. You can speak with individual developers that are coming before you, those are not violations.
So going back to the example of the park commissions, for example, if this body here, as planning commissions, how many park commissions can we talk to? Can we talk to all five, or we are limited to one, or none?
You could talk to all five. Now, my caveat there is, we don't want to give them a Brown Act violation. So if they're done with whatever they're deciding, you can talk to all five, not an issue. You don't want to be...
But technically, we can each talk to each individual of those commissions?
Of a separate commission, yes, about a topic that they're dealing with, yes.
So let's say, Commission One, Commission Two, Three, Five, we can actually each individually, we can talk to Commission One, and then the next day, we can go and talk to Commission Two about the same topic, and that won't violate the Browns Act?
The same topic, so as long, if the, yes, that won't violate the Brown Act.
And what if all those five people can, like, randomly talk to each other, how does that not violating?
So we're talking about whether you're potentially violating the Brown Act. So let's say you talk to the Parks Commission, and I don't know, Subject X, and then you talk to the Senior Citizen Commission, also about the same topic. That's not a violation for you. The risk for you is if Commissioner Becerra goes talks to the same people, and in that conversation, they mention, oh, yeah, Commissioner Hang was just talking to us about this topic, okay? Now, if that topic is something that could potentially come before you as a planning commission, there's your risk. If it has nothing to do with the planning commission, not an issue. Now, whether the senior committee commission is violating the Brown Act, you know, that's a whole separate analysis, and honestly, it would have to be a very fact-specific look at what you guys are talking about.
Would that even pertain to what we're talking about? Do we even have a reason to go and speak with them?
Maybe, I mean, you're public officials, so...
I'm just asking.
Well, with the general plan or the update of the zoning code or something that has to do with...
That's another committee that's not planning commission, though.
Right, but because the item in some form or fashion might come to the planning commission...
But wouldn't that be on an agenda?
Well, general plan or housing element update would be. Parks, that's a good example, Parks Commission would have vested interest in the parks. So for you talking to the Parks Commission about some aspect of a general plan update that topics on parks, that's not a Brown Act violation for you. If they're considering it, if it's somehow before their commission, and it's still before the commission, and you communicate to them about what each of them are saying to each other, then you're creating, you would be then creating a Brown Act issue for them. But if they're past that and it's coming for you, you individually can talk to them. I know, it can get a little sticky, and this is a complicated, can be a complicated topic. It sounds like it's simple.
Sorry, depends on the subject.
Yeah, it boils down to transparency and taking actions publicly, but you get into the weeds, and that's why you need to, you know, ask me for sometimes an analysis.
Any other questions?
Just one more. Say that on a commission, you decide to go buy a site, and you happen to see the applicant. Normally, if that does happen, you know, you'd talk to them, but when you come to the meeting, you maybe would talk to the attorney and say, hey, I went out to the site, I met the applicant, this is what we discussed, do I need to disclose that, or do I need to recuse myself?
No, do you recuse yourself just because you talk to the applicant at their site, nor is there a legal need to disclose? Now, it is common practice to...
Yes.
When you're discussing, to say, oh, yeah, I went to the site and...
I ran into...
Yeah. And I would probably advise you to do so. Again, it boils down to be transparent when you can, so...
Anything else, anyone? All right, thank you.
My pleasure.
And with that, we have no other business, so the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.